Good evening, everybody. I think the call meeting in order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Supervisor Fulton.
Here.
Treasurer Horning.
Here.
Jofu.
Here.
Trustee Collier.
Here.
Trustee Jermaine.
Here.
Trustee Harper.
Here.
Thank you. Item number four is approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Petrusi, second by treasurer Horning. Any discussion?
Yes, I was curious if we could change the alter the work session so that the manager's discussion is at the end. Let's set a time limit that if we're not done with the other business until eight o'clock that we postpone it to the next meeting.
So we'll go to eight o'clock on whatever we can get through and then go into the closed session?
That's my recommendation because I think we're going to be able to get through them fairly quickly.
Okay. I don't have any problem with that. Anybody else have a concern with that?
Okay. I don't have a big problem.
Okay. All right. You support the amendment?
Mm-hmm.
And support? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. Call of the public. Anybody that wants to have some discussion or comments on the applicant 7A, we're going to allow those comments to be heard at that time as well, under the application. So you don't have to come up and make a statement right now. If you have something other than that, you're more than welcome to come up. Good evening.
Hey, good evening. My name is Kate DeRozier. I'm at 10484 North Valley Court in the township. And good evening. I attended the planning commission meeting the other night and saw the plans for Imagine Theater Complex. And I live off Heartland Road. I'm somewhat concerned and I raised this point and I know I've talked about speed limits on Heartland Road before, but I just wanted to put out this comment. Just with that theater going in and the seating of what 1,100, maybe it's 1,300, 10 theaters, there's definitely going to be more traffic on Heartland Road. And I think people who live in the township out, you know, north are probably going to use Heartland Road a lot to come in. And so I know there were traffic studies done, but I sincerely hope that the township will help in getting those speed limits reduced on Heartland Road. And again, I apologize for not knowing the timeframe for that development for the theater, but there's no question, at least in my mind, and I would I would expect there's going to be increased traffic on Heartland Road when that theater complex goes in. And I would hope that the township would assist in reducing the speed limits on Heartland Road at that time because I think it's going to be a serious problem. There are a lot of people try to get in and off that road who live along there. I'm talking about between Town Square and Dunham. And there are going to be people who are going to be driving through on Heartland Road to get to that new theater complex whenever it's put in. And it's it's, you know, folks who are local are not going to take US 23 and come around. So there's going to be a lot of traffic. And I think right now, I think the speed limit right now is like 55 and it's incredibly high. And I think it's dangerous. And I've seen near misses of people and bikes several times. And so that's my comment. And I know it's way out there in the future, but I just kind of wanted to say it now, knowing that that planning commission meeting was just this last week. That's why I wanted to make that statement. And I know the state police sets it, but I would hope the township would help in in moving that along to take to improve that speed limit, make it lower.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else this evening to call to the public? Being none, I'll move on to item number six, which is approval for consent agenda.
So moved.
Of course.
Motion by trustee Harper, second by trustee Jermaine. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. Move us on to item number 7A, which is Penny Subdivision, Outlot A. Manager Wickman, if you'd like to review this item?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Supervisor. Just a brief overview. This is a conundrum 50 years in the making. There is quite a bit of detail in your packet on it. Essentially, the subdivision, actually, this is an amendment or annexation to the original subdivision that was platted sometime before this, but in the 60s, this part of the subdivision was platted to include these eight lots in an outlot off of Maxfield Road, just south of Lake Maxfield. At the time of the plat, you have a an outlot that's designated that goes behind those properties. Today, Courtney Court of Forest Brook Hills subdivision now runs along the east edge of that outlot. But outlot in in subdivision plat parlance had a meaning. Generally, when you see a subdivision plat with an outlot, there's further information designated or dedicated in that outlot for a purpose of some sort of park or open space or common area. That's lacking here. There's no detail on that. As a general practice, when a subdivision has planted an outlot, is intended to designate one of those things and is not considered as a developable lot. So as it stands today, the planning department is not in a position to grant a land use permit to build a home there without further determination of the board, and that's what the property owner is asking for. The challenge is that since at least the 80s, while really, the original platter of the subdivision owned, continued to own this outlot for a couple of decades, and since then it's changed hands several times, it has been assessed as a buildable lot for valuation purposes for a number of decades that we can't even really put our hands on. And in the 1996 SAD 2, it was given an REU and assessed for an REU for sewer, and that REU has actually just just got paid off recently. So the current owner of it would like to build on it, and the planning department cannot approve that without a determination of the board. Due to the circumstances, it's really, it is the board's privilege to say yes or no to that. And there are there is standing for either one of those. So that's the short version.
Doesn't he have to? This is part of the recorded plat, correct?
Yes.
And it's going to result in a revision to a plat, correct?
Well, that's, I don't, we haven't, I don't, I don't know that we've been given direction by the attorney on that particular piece of it.
Well, I'm just wondering, usually, I mean, they ultimately need the consent of us, but that isn't the end of it. I think what ends up, he may end up having to do under the Land Division Act is actually file lawsuits in certain court, request in court after an order. Typically, he has to notify people within a certain radius under the court provisions, including the Drain Commissioner and all the Road Commission and local government and so forth with respect to revision to the plat. So I, there, this might be the first step in it. I don't see any objection to it unless there's something in the plat itself. You know, if there's covenants that ran with the land, is there any, has anyone done the research to return, see if there's any been any covenants that run, designated what this for?
That's what's missing.
You did research about it.
What's missing from the record is a further description that would say outlot A is to be or not to be some sort of developable lot.
Who has done the research, though?
Well, we had looked through the, our assessor and our planning director with the register of deeds to see what was on record. And they had actually, in your, in the letter, you'll notice some information about when each of the homes was developed. That's also how we assembled the record of who owned this outlot over time. That's in the planner's memo. So that they were, did not find anything that would shed light on that. You may be right, and that is part of the conundrum here is that generally, these types of things, deed restrictions, restrictive covenants, they are not for necessarily for the township to police. Those are private issues, civil issues between private parties. And so you may be right as to how they might have to ultimately resolve the subdivision plat.
It says right here from Mike Holmier about the replat.
Okay.
Page, page. Yeah, they're gonna need. Two of Mike's memo pretty much addresses the replat. And as long as they're not changing the, the lot itself, the lot lines, I think he says, it's not a replat.
Oh, okay.
And it says although it changed to an outlot, may not require a replat.
He says may not require?
They may not require replat. The Land Division Act may require municipal approval, so basically, we would have to approve it.
So wait a minute, he's equivocating? Is he saying yes or no? He says may or may not.
Okay, he says if an outlot A is actually an outlot, then a replat would not be required, period.
Okay.
It is, there's no really clear direction on incidents like this. This was the challenge even to the township attorney, is that there's no specific statutory language to guide us here, a statutory definition that precludes or prohibits what's being proposed. And so the township attorney's memo to you is also conveying there are grounds by which the board could say yes or grounds by which you could say no to the request.
Can you tell me if the township staff have done anything else to kind of sway our decision one way or the other in terms of notices to property owners or things like that?
Oh, yes. Mentioned in the planner's memo is that notices of this meeting tonight were sent to the property owners that surround this outlot, including those who are in the Forest Brook Hills subdivision. And I expect that some of the folks here tonight are here as a result of that.
And at our admin meeting, due to the fact that this was unique, I've asked some of the people here this, even if they, as opposed to going to call to the public, if they want to come up for a few minutes and let us know their their thoughts, that we would open that up for them as well. And I think there's a few people here that may take advantage of that to maybe just help hear what their thoughts on the on the process are.
One more question for James. Do you, I actually forgot my question. Can I? I'll be silent for a minute.
So again, a lot of moving pieces and understandable how we might lose track of the thought. So I won't attend, attempt to go through every detail. Happy to answer questions, but if you'd like to open public comment.
If you can maybe speak to the access to the lot itself.
Yeah, so the outlot is, does have sort of what we would call a flag-shaped lot with frontage on on Maxfield Road. And I wouldn't necessarily, just so you know, in the research that we've done, the fact that it has an access point to Maxfield Road does not necessarily mean it was developable. The subdivision act in place at the time actually required that even outlots have an access point to the the road. So even if it had been, if we knew for sure it was intended as open space or park or something like that, it would have had to have that access point anyway.
I remembered my question.
Yeah.
Knowing that the township staff has been looking at this for a while, have you been able to come up with a good reason on why in the past it was decided to assign an REU to a designated outlot?
Yeah, that's a very good question and certainly one we did some introspection on. The assessor would tell you that this is not unfortunately uncommon. Again, because at the end of the day, we've talked about, the township is not generally the one or even proper for to police deed restrictions, restrictive covenants, plat, you know, the details of those. Those are private party agreements between property owners and their successors. And we run into that all the time. And so to some extent, we just don't necessarily pay attention to that. But clearly, we didn't necessarily go looking for other incidents of this, but the assessor is familiar that this is a common thing that does happen where these outlots end up getting owned. Maybe they, because it's not like the site condominiums they are today, they might end up going, you know, the homeowners don't end up paying the taxes on it, it goes to tax foreclosure sale, somebody comes into ownership of it. Sometimes because maybe it's not, has a depressed value, it changes hand a couple of times in cash transactions that don't require financing or title searches or title insurances. And so you get, it just happens over time and due to a series of potential errors and lack of due diligence.
Yeah, because if you read on page two of Troy's research, it says that the guy who developed the subdivision, instead of conveying it back to the subdivision, he conveyed it to a private guy, and then it was sold six times after that.
James, can you show a current aerial where the other sub is and the relationship to that?
So these are the eight lots. Actually, the the number one lot ended up being absorbed into what today is the Forest Brook Hills Site Condominium Project, which runs along Courtney Court and Shawnt Court here. So this is out, this is was originally Lot 1 that turned into a different site condominium. The lot is outlined in orange and runs along the west side of that Courtney Drive.
I don't know if you answered this already, but do we know if there are any deed restrictions or any covenants?
Nothing remarkable that I guess caught my attention necessarily that was brought to my attention. You know, planted subdivisions from the 60s were pretty cookie cutter on that kind of thing and nothing, nothing remarkable, I would say. But nothing, certainly nothing that sheds light on why was this parcel created. It just, the only thing we have is two words, Outlot A.
Are there any other questions from the board right now before I open it up to some of the citizens that may have a question or a comment? I'm not sure if we can answer anything, but wanted to have their voice be heard. So at this point, if you, please step forward to the microphone. This is on, just so you know, it's on TV. It's actually being broadcast all over the world.
On the internet.
It's on the internet.
I would have known, I would have worn something to it.
But if you could please state your name for us as well.
Linda Renahan.
Thank you.
And I was the former president of Forest Brook Hills Association as of December 31st, and we now have a new president. But within the last two years, while I was on the board, we had a couple builders approach us about gaining access to that lot. And instead of coming in off of Maxfield, they wanted to come in off of Courtney. And so we worked with the builders and we actually went back with some provisions that we're asking for. And at the time, they were actually asking that that lot be split into two lots. And of course, we didn't know at all that this lot was an outlot lot or anything like that. So we, we requested that in order for those two lots to be made part of our association, the master deed would have to be revised and that those, a builder would be responsible for those charges. We also asked for some additional money to help cover the wear and tear of the roads while, from all the building construction. And the last thing we asked for was that along Courtney, that today we have 12 feet and we asked for an additional, I forget how many feet.
That slither of land.
Yeah, the slither of land, that that land be deeded to us. And I have a concern because I heard as you were talking that that lot, no changes could be made to the the current lot lines. A few minutes ago, you mentioned that. Right. And so if, let's just say this is approved, and if the builder or developer comes to us again, that sounds like something that we would have to give up in order for that person to be able to build on that lot. And it's a concern for me because that was something that we we were asking for. So that the, it would give us extra property so that we wouldn't be, the homes wouldn't be jammed upright against the area there where it slivers down to nothing. And then I did have another question. I thought I heard you say that the, excuse me, that the current owner is the one wanting to build, and I don't think that's the case. So I just wanted to note that. Yeah, I think we are under the understanding he wanted to sell it to build. Okay. All right. That's it.
But there's, there's only one REU with that parcel.
It can only be one single family.
Yeah, my understanding, originally, yes, the owner was interested in splitting that to two buildable lots. My understanding in the most recent conversation is retracted that and is focused on just the one. And if you are inclined to approve the request tonight, you can make that as a condition, that it is only one.
I think that's in Troy's motion.
Yeah, I probably was a consideration here.
But this, what year, and again, this is going to start getting really complex. I don't know if we're the right entity to be trying to determine what we can and can't do with an applauded sub. But that, the way I understand it, the outlot A stays with the original subdivision.
Right.
And what you're requesting would have to go into something completely different because you're going to remove that outlot from that, their first platted sub, and then you're going to have, not want to have access off that off yours. So I, again, we appreciate your comments, and maybe at the end of the night, we might not come to a conclusion. We might have more questions so we can make the right decision at this, at this element. But I do appreciate that. And perhaps we can get to your telephone number too, since you're the past president. You're a great resource. If there's additional questions to, any discussions that may have occurred and who else may be interested in that. So thank you. Others? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Joe Carl. I'm actually the one with the driveway that runs through the, right there, 1414 Maxfield Road. Right there. That was all originally part of the initial home building project when the house was first built. When we first were looking at the home eight years ago, I was getting ready to retire from Marine Corps after 20 years at that point in time in service. We came back, that was part of what appealed to us was that lot back there, we had actually come up, we checked with the township office, the assessor's office, they indicated that was a non-buildable lot. That was initially expressed to us from the Realtors, Real Estate Agency, that this was non-buildable. So anything we purchased, you know, if we purchased a home, that would not be buildable. We did double check with the township office before we did purchase a home. You know, because we didn't want, because we did understand, you know, part of that driveway was considered an easement, which was built into the title, you know, for the home as well. You know, so that was part of our concern when we initially started looking at the home, because we know that lot back behind wasn't part of our property. But we were advised, you know, it's non-buildable, it'll always stay that way. So that was part of what the appeal was for us when we actually had purchased the home. We didn't find out until actually, Super Bowl last year, that the owner of the property, the actual owner of the property was, we were under the impression it was actually belonged to the subdivision initially began with. So we initially came up here, apparently, computer systems were done for the township. So you couldn't actually tell us exactly at that point in time who owned the property. They were all on the assumption it was actually part of the township. I didn't know that it was actually somebody else until Super Bowl Sunday last year, when he showed up and say, hey, we're going to come in, we're going to put a driveway through here, it's going to go all the way back through the back parking lot, your back, you know, yard there, along the road around Courtney Court, you know, with the intention of selling that, you know, to possibly purchase a home. That was the first time we'd find out about it in eight years. And so I know that's part of our concern. If that is actually developed, you put a driveway running all the way through along Courtney Court, what's that going to do to my property value in addition to down the road? Because suddenly, now I've got a driveway running next to Courtney Court through my backyard to a home, you know, which essentially that, where you'd end up having to put that driveway actually butts right up almost against the edge of the concrete platform for our parking. You know, what's that going to do to our, you know, property value in the long term as well? You know, we were initially advised it's not going to be buildable, it's going to always remain that way. Now we're finding out something different.
But you're saying that you have a title or easement, or that driveway should be in the, not on your own property?
Correct. That was built into it. And he actually provided me a copy of the letter from when it was initially signed, I believe, in 2001, I believe.
Letter or is it a recorded easement?
It is actually on the top. From my understanding, because I was actually still stationed in North Carolina, my wife had signed the paperwork, and now that was initially part of the holdup when we were trying to close on the property, because initially it wasn't built in. But they did find out on record it was supposed to be worked into the title, and they actually got it in the paperwork, you know, that that was part of the easement.
Yes, that's true.
Well, again, the, we're kind of like opening up an onion right now.
Oh, I understand.
And it looks like we're going to have maybe more than.
Layers and layers and layers.
Few more layers. So what we're going to.
Put the driveway, it's like, it goes, you know, we've got a pad of cement where that was built, you know, 40 years ago when the house was built, that apparently now that is part of his, now considered part of his property, that, you know, like we were told, that that property was never even, it wasn't buildable.
Hopefully, don't take this the wrong way, but we're not going to get into.
Oh, I understand.
Somebody said.
We understand.
There's, I'm sure there's some legal ways to handle this. And again, it sounds to me like we're going to get everybody's, if you have different documentation that somebody else doesn't have, who's going to sort all that type of thing out?
Oh, I understand.
Okay. But I appreciate your input. And again, if we want to make sure we get your name, if you have some additional documentation that may be prudent for this, for this application, we might want to be reaching out to you as well. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Sally Bowman, and I live in 1318 Maxfield, that's lot number two of the Penny Sub. And I've been there for almost 30 years. I've been there since the house was built. So this is actually a discussion that's happened before. We worked with Mr. Rhodes on it way back in the day. So we too, when we bought our property, were told that this was a.
Ma'am, where's your, just so I know which one.
It's number two, so it's the last right there.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So I, I'm wondering too where this came from, because it was always our assumption it wasn't buildable, and we checked before we purchased the lot. But a big concern I have is between myself and the next lot is a drainage easement. It doesn't work properly, it never has, but we've had the Drain Commissioner come out several times, you know, every handful of years in the last 30 years, he's come out to check that easement. It is supposed to run from Maxfield Road to drain on the outlot. It doesn't because it's lower on the Maxfield Road sign. So right now, like always, I have standing water there. The Drain Commissioner agrees it's wrong, and I guess the Road Commission has something to do with it as well. But there's no funds to fix it. But my concern is, first of all, if you make the outlot a buildable lot, when all these years, the Drain Commissioner has been telling me the solution to my drainage problem, and as it was supposed to be, that water was supposed to end up on the outlot. I guess my final concern is if you made the outlot buildable, the improper drainage easement I have now runs the wrong way. So am I going to then have a bigger problem than I have now with drainage? Because the problem has gotten worse over the years, and it's getting pretty significant. I probably have right now 20 feet of water across and a big long distance down. So, and if you walk from my property out into that outlot, probably somewhere, yeah, about there, I guess, there's some sort of big covert thing back there that I assume is somebody's using for drainage. And that's been there for many years. We talked to Mr. Rhodes about that. So there was some intent sometime to do something drainage-wise with that. So, so I have lots of concerns about this.
And again, if you have any documentation from some of those discussions and such, if you could get a copy to the township.
Yeah, the Drain Commissioner brings the same folder when he comes, so.
All right. So there's another, there's another layer that we were unsure of.
Well, just so you understand, drainage easements within a plat are private easements. They're not, they're not under the jurisdiction of the Drain Commissioner, unless they're legally established drain.
Well, here's the problem, here's where my question is, it seems like this guy with this lot, I've never met him, I have nothing against him. He has a piece of property he can't do with what he wants. I'm in the same boat. I have a drainage easement that doesn't work, that I can't fill in. So, you know, I kind of feel his pain, but I'm afraid what he wants is going to make it worse for me. And certainly, when I have this big buffer of woods behind my house, if you take that away, you've made an effect on my property value, you know? And that's significant to me, too.
The drainage easement actually goes, if you look at it, because drainage easements can be placed in a plat, but if you look, it actually, the drainage easement appears to me. to me, if not, okay, so there's an existing 12-inch private easement for public utilities, and a 20-inch wide, 20-foot wide-
20 foot.
Drain, drainage easement.
Mm-hmm.
And it goes down to 10 feet by the road? Is that what that says, Joe?
Yeah, it looks that way. But it doesn't tell you which direction the drain is supposed to go. What's the elevation, is it dropped towards the lake, or-
Well, it's supposed to, it's, originally, way back in time, all the houses in the penny sub had a ditch in front of them, and, and this is what I'm told, this I don't know. And they all channeled down, but everybody has filled those ditches in, except for myself and my neighbor.
Right.
But the standing water problem is right up on Maxfield Road.
So, I guess my question to you is, you're thinking that the Drain Commissioner has advised that the drain is supposed to go from-
From Maxfield to the outlot.
Maxfield to the outlet, not outlot to the front of the-
Correct, it's supposed to take the water away from the lake, which was the point of it, is to keep the runoff out of the lake. And you can see clearly, and you're welcome, please come out and look at it.
No, and here's the other question, does the Drain Commissioner ask you, or indicate that the swales or ditches that were in the front, you know, along Long Lake Road, did they all come, which would be, that's north?
They were to come from north to south.
To south, and then connect to that?
Yes.
And then go to the outlot?
Yep.
So, they're supposed to collect from there?
Yep. And you can see when you come out there, you can, you know, it's not like it gets flat towards the outlot, it's, it's just higher ground. So, you can clearly see where it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else this evening? Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Speaking about drainage issues, I'm actually at 1291 Courtney Court, so I'm right next to that lot. And since I moved in and we had the landscaper come out and put our yard together, I've had tons of drainage problems. And part of my concern is that, so my house is the low point of the neighborhood, and that lot, I don't know with all the trees and grass and everything else, how much lower that is, or if it's higher than mine. And so, we're in the middle of trying to figure out, you know, how we're going to fix this drainage problem, and I'm concerned that building on that lot could exacerbate the issues that I'm already having.
Forest Brook isn't that old, is it? So, they would have had to have addressed, in a, wouldn't they, Joe, I mean, you're an expert in this, and, we've got a lot of experts up here. But Joe, wouldn't you have to have some type of drainage program for a group, what was that, babe?
Usually, with a plat, you have to get drainage signed off by the Drain Commissioner, in terms of, you know, the rules of the plat, that's why they record these things as a part of the plat. However, you usually also have, connected to the plat, a set of covenants and documents that kind of describe what the, where the utility easements are and all that as well. You know, I mean, it's not just on the plat, usually, some, not, more in my, you know, more of the, or on the plats, they have all that in there now. But I'm just curious, this, this, I'd have to look at the, I'd have to look at the Forest Brook.
Well, I think at this point, there's a lot of moving parts to this.
I don't know if we can make a decision.
I don't think we can make a decision, but whose responsibility is this to make this decision? That's the question I am.
Well, it is ours, but-
I mean, it's, because it sounds to me, there's a lot of moving parts, it looks to me like you got to look, if Forest Brook is only, you know, less than 20 years old, which I think it is, there should be some type of a drainage plan in there, there should be some, they had to address it when they put it in.
Yeah. Forest Brook, what does Forest Brook have to do with this?
Because they took those lots right there in the front.
Right.
Depending on which way that water's supposed to go.
Yeah.
From a drainage perspective. So, you've got the easement, you've got the other gentleman that says-
Right next to the triangle?
Yeah, there's a house there now.
Okay.
This is a lot.
That's you?
Yeah, so I just moved in in June.
Okay.
And, um, and you know, just being in the neighborhood, too, thinking about this driveway coming all the way down and then going to that lot, it, it almost seems like it's going to be odd, you know? I, I work in the mortgage industry, I'm an, I used to be an underwriter, I'm in the sales side now, and it almost seems like something people would complain about, you know? And that it would take, drive down the marketability of our homes and the subdivision.
And this is, so you had mentioned that your association has had some discussion with somebody who's interested in that lot?
In the past year.
In the past year?
Actually, too, they came to us asking if we have access in Courtney Court.
And you were acceptable, just, let's just make an assumption, if one house could go in there, but you were comfortable, as long as they needed that extra land, we're next to that gentleman that's using it for his driveway, is Mr. Carl?
Yes. And is there, as we're comfortable putting it to a vote?
Okay.
It's never, because the builders back down.
I'm real concerned that the previous speaker indicated that, that the drain is supposed to go to that lot, that that outlot may have had some flowages or, you know, drainage tanks to flow onto that property. Get a developer in there, starts building on there, that's going to change even more than the drainage that, that was originally proposed for that lot. It's curious that, that's such a large lot, and it's, you know, that it was designated an outlot for a reason.
Yeah, it was for drainage purposes.
They just did a recorder, right?
Could be, I don't know. I mean, at the end of the day, somebody needs to look at that to make sure that, I don't know, I mean, it just looks like, if it's supposed to drain this way, collect the water off the part of the, you know, coming off the lots and the road, and then redirect, you know, direct it towards that outlot, what happens when somebody builds on that?
Well, it would be interesting to see where Forest Brook's water was intended to go.
Right.
Yeah, that would be the-
And there should be something to do that.
You'd think there'd be some contour maps somewhere.
Right.
That we could get an idea. I wonder if, I wonder if Brian Johnkier has contour maps for that, that lot, Bob, do you have any?
He used to live there, right?
Yeah. Is there water there? I don't know much about the water there, I guess. I just want to shed a little bit of light, number one, on the drainage, that outlet is significantly lower than Courtney Court. It actually, as you're walking along, I used to walk along there quite frequently, as did all the other neighbors, it, it does drop off significantly, probably to the two and a three to four feet, it's not just a couple inches.
So, it's got to have been a-
I will say, I did investigate, on my personal time, the drainage issue due to my former home, and speaking with the Drain Commissioner, the Forest Brook neighborhood was designed to basically shed to the south, there's a wetland in the south, and then a pond that, or parallel to the, I'll call it the abandoned section of Lone Tree, there's a ditch line there that ultimately runs west. And that there, approaching the Drain Commission, the only option to improve that would be through a special assessment, obviously.
Correct.
Or to develop a drainage district. But that, they are very familiar with, and it does ultimately go into a tributary into Long Lake. That was where Forest Brook, ironically, you would think it would go the other way, it does not, it goes to the south. And then, once it hits Lone Tree, it heads to the west. That being said, I, I do believe there, there's certainly some more investigative work. I am confident you'll see with the contours, that it does certainly, it is lower on that outlot. Regardless of that, I, I did want to shed some light on the builder situation, I was quite involved with that process. The Forest Brook Homeowners Association was approached on two different occasions by two different builders. Essentially, when the lot, outlot was for sale, people potentially looking at exploring the feasibility of building on it. There was nothing ever solidified or put in writing per se, it was just a verbal question of, would you permit the development and separation of outlot A into two separate lots, and allow access from Courtney Court? And from the homeowner's perspective, because at the time, I was part of that homeowners' association, and I don't want to speak on your behalf, so stop me, but we were under the impression of, if they become or had access off of Courtney Court, at least we could uphold them to our bylaws, as far as construction, design standards. Without that, they would pretty much be on their own. Ultimately, the people on Courtney Court and along Maxfield are going to have to look at this development from one way, shape, or another. So, we were trying to make the best of a situation that, you know, I, I don't think any of us were approaching the builder to say, hey, how about you build on this? It was more, if somebody's going to develop it, let's make the best of it that we can, perhaps we can make it look like it would blend into the neighborhood versus building what they would prefer, and not have to follow our design standards. So, I hope that just sheds a little light. There was nothing, again, ever in writing, no confirmation, no agreement, both, I don't believe either builder ever moved forward and actually made an offer on the property, but I just wanted to shed light on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Petrusi, do you have any? Any comments or questions?
No. Not yet.
Not yet? Anybody else in the audience have any questions before we continue on with the board discussion? Appreciate your input. I'll take any type of advice from some of you people that do this a lot.
I think we should investigate more into the whole drainage issue, contour map.
I'd like a little more on the drainage issue, and I just, here's my, here's my experience, you know, you solve one problem, you create another problem. If there's already a problem here with the drainage, and we were to approve this, and they develop it, and then suddenly it becomes, you know, with, every time you put a, you know, slab cement in a house, you've got impervious surface to that drain, and where's that going to go to? And, you know, I mean, if, I suppose, one way to solve this is if the developer were to dedicate, you know, a certain flow or potential pond, or something like that, to make sure that water gets where it needs to go, that's one way to do it, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of heat, a lot here. And then we got the driveway that is on part of the parcel-
That's correct.
That somebody wants to sell. I, I'd like to know if there is a dedicated easement, because who could dedicate easement on the outlot, whether the original developer or prior owner?
Who would dedicate it, right?
One of the prior owners. So, I, I'm curious to see with that document. Again, this might all be very much a private issue, more than it is a public issue, I mean, we, we would support one way or the other, but I would hate for us to approve something and then invite lawsuits between neighbors for something that we're not even sure of, you know?
And again, I think there could be some solutions, I mean, one thing, there's only one REU on that lot, so the question I would have is, it's one home. I mean, there's been discussion of having two, but I would think it would be one home, if you were, I would hate to all of a sudden, open it up to a development that there's, I mean, what standards are they going to go by? So, there's a whole lot of moving parts when it comes to this. Can, can we dictate it's just one home?
Troy has that right in his-
You could have that as a condition of your approval.
Troy put that in the approval.
So, the, the moving parts are the driveway and that, that little, the easement for the road, the neighbors at the Forest Brook are interested in perhaps allowing that into their sub, that would, that would make you have to turn that outlot into, take it off from that, put it back on to Forest Brook, and then they would-
I don't think so.
I don't think you would have to do that.
You wouldn't be able to do that?
I don't think you could put it back on Forest Brook, no.
No.
So, how, how would, how would you, Forest Brook put their covenants on that?
Well, they, they would only come in later, after, after the builder would require requests to leave the other subdivision and come into Forest Brook. I don't know how you'd do that, but-
I don't even think they would have to, would they? They would just have to agree to the-
Easement.
To, well, to the covenants for the access, for the right for the access-
Forest Brook would really-
They would agree to the covenants of that subdivision. Well, that subdivision has to allow access off to an extra, a different access point as well.
I think the issue is, if they're not on master deed, the HOA's leverage to collect. I don't know that they have the leverage that they would want to collect. It can be, obviously, the outlot number one was eventually taken off of that plat and put into this master deed. It would not be-
As a separate homeowners' association, though, correct? Forest Brook's is, is different than the others, the other plat itself.
Yeah, but what we're talking about, doing to the outlot, they, was already done to lot one, to the lot number one in the first place.
All right.
I mean, it's not easy, there's a lot of, I think, some hoops to jump through, and some expense to that, as they noted, that they would want them to pay for.
So, that's the question, where this goes, there's a lot of moving parts. Is this something that's the responsibility of the township? Because I can see lawyers involved, I can see-
I didn't notice the legal thing at the moment.
It came under separate cover as an email later.
Oh, I see. Oh, my-
But by, by the township saying that, the REU owns one home there, doesn't mean that he can build there, he still has to go through the proper approval-
I, I understand that.
Which would require his drainage, his, his access, his, all the building requirements that we have within our, our nexus. So, so even though we say, yeah, you can build there, doesn't mean he can build there.
But that platted sub probably has its own covenants that go with it. Because that was done before it occurred in ordinance.
Probably does, yeah.
So, does it fall under the, the original covenants, or does it go into the new, what would be considered a new ordinance? Because it's not, right now, there's no land divisions in it, so making an assumption-
It's not that proper drainage.
If you were to approve it, the simple answer to that question is, they would have to. It's still a part of the platted subdivision, whatever deed restrictions or covenants are there, they'd have to follow. But we can, I can get, find out what those were, I can also pose a question to the township attorney to clarify the ripeness for, is this, is this a, the decision point for the board to make, possibly with conditions that they get the other approvals that they need, or vice versa, can we forbear that decision until those other?
All right, so we can, we can, is it acceptable to table this conversation? The folks that had spoke today that have some information that could be prudent to help put this together, if you could get any information you had on what your proposal was from the developers, if you were comfortable with that, gentleman with the driveway, you said you had something perhaps in your deed, that, or title that discussed that, and then the, the person that had the drainage issue, if you have any information on that, and we'll contact the Drain Commissioner to see if they have issues.
Even if you could just provide some photographs of what it's currently like, because we've had so much rain recently?
Mm-hmm. Hey, hang on a second, you open that? Okay.
The other thing that I'm a little concerned about, too, is that I'm right next to that lot, so say that you guys approved it, and then as an HOA, we didn't want it to be part of our sub, they could still build on it. So, it just seems that it would be odd that they would be driving through our subdivision, living right next to me, but not following our bylaws. So, it's almost like, when I try to market my home as, you know, with my bylaws and a site condo, and there's certain expectations, this person right next to me could be doing whatever they want. They could have, you know, five cars on their lawn for all I know.
Yeah, there was, there was a statement made with that, but I don't think-
Okay, I'm sorry.
We're not, we're not trying to be attorneys or say what, if I can, I can't do something, there's probably a way that could be written, I don't know how that happens.
Yeah.
Because you're dealing with something that was built in the 60s, or whenever, 70s, and something that was built 20 years ago.
So, it just seems so peculiar to me, though, the thought of that, so, just wanted to share that last little tidbit.
I don't think they could just drive into your subdivision, have access to your lot.
You would have to, your homeowners' association-
That would have to be all approved.
Approved by your subdivision.
Okay.
Because his access is off Max-
So, we would have some say in the end-
If he wanted access.
For them to drive through.
If he got access off Max, then no.
He's got access off the other road.
Then no.
Off of your subdivision road, off of Courtney Court.
Well, when he comes down that drive, though, isn't he technically driving down Courtney, or is it kind of-
No, he's in the, he's subdivision.
That's his property.
Okay.
Be a new driveway installed.
It's a driveway.
That's his property, but according to them, they have an easement there, or something, so they, whatever.
Yeah.
The cleanest way would be to have them access off your sub.
Right.
So, you can, because you basically got a long, one road spike strip next to a road, so.
And it's potentially a decision point for the board, if you, if you do get to get to the point where you might approve that, as is within that plat and subdivision, consideration of the board could be given to, um, things like, you know, the architectural, I mean, if you can get way into the, the details of that, um, to that point, cause it is surrounded, for the most part, by homes built under a different standard.
Yes, go ahead.
Is the owner of that piece of property here?
I don't see him.
Donald?
Yeah, oh, there is.
Okay. Do you wanna throw your two cents into the discussion, or? Why not?
I didn't recognize you with the-
Sometimes when you get old. Well, I've owned this property since nineteen ninety-nine.
Your name?
Donald Cartwright.
Okay, thank you.
I live at three five one zero Washington Street in beautiful downtown Heartland.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, I've paid the taxes on it as a residential piece of property. I've paid for sewer attachment, which was part of the agreement when I bought the property, so, this, excuse me, write-off tells me that it must be a buildable lot if it's got sewer attachment, but now that I wanna do something with it, I'm told otherwise. And, uh, it just seems to me wrong, huh? One of the things I, the complaint about the drainage, well, Courtney Court put a dam across the property from draining any further, uh, east. That road there, that's a dam, that's, it's higher than the rest of the property. It wasn't that way when I used to hunt back there when Arm, or Armstrong's owned it, but it is now. And, uh, everything from Court, or from Forest Brook drains to the catch basin, or the catch pond behind Lot Thirteen there, I used to own that lot, and I also owned Lot Thirty-One, which you live on.
Don, when you mentioned something just briefly about some drainage, it, it's in that, can you just explain that again? Where you, where you feel like the water used to go?
Well, let's see, Lot Thirteen was right across from Lot Thirty-One, and they had, uh, Forest Brook has a drain that runs back into the number, what is it, number four pond.
At, at Heartland Glen?
At Heartland Glen, number four south. And that's where Courtney, or Forest Brook drains to. They've got a catch pond there and everything. Uh, I don't know what, if there was a drain set up for it to drain to Outlet A, for Penny to drain to Outlet A, where was it supposed to go when they plotted, uh, Forest Brook?
That's what we don't know.
Like I say, they built a dam with their road, I always figured everything was to drain from there across to the lake, but I guess they don't like that.
I, I'll be honest with you, I don't think that's what really, I think it's supposed to drain out of that property. That's why there's a drainage easement there.
You know-
Why, let me, let me finish why. Your elevation seems like, based on what it's been said, it is much lower. Why would you have a drainage easement coming from that lot, going to the lake, when you have an elevation that's lower?
Well, there's no culvert or anything, so it's a bar.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, is that that drainage easement right there, it doesn't make sense for that drainage easement to send water-
To the road.
To the road. It's, uh, it's, it makes more sense that it takes, takes the water and brings it to that outlot. Your, your elevation's three feet, four feet lower than everybody else's, well, why would you have a drainage easement coming off your property?
I don't have any water on the outlot.
Well, I know, because the drainage patterns probably have changed, but I'm just saying, that easement is real problematic for me. I, I'm just saying, I'm not, I'm not comfortable, because I deal with drains all the time, changing the, the, uh, something in a plat, or allowing a plat, you know, when, when we have a designated drainage easement right in the plat. And I, and I, I, my guess is, if Brian Jankier, the Drain Commissioner, was looking at all his records, cause he wouldn't have signed this plat, like, he wasn't around that, but, um, my guess is-
I bet he was around for Forest Brook.
He was around for Forest Brook. My guess is, he would say that that water's supposed to come out to your outlot.
I think before we jump to conclusions on anything-
But I don't know what I'm talking about, really.
We gotta find the facts to where Forest Brook's water's supposed to be going, to make sure that was installed properly. Uh, I understand that, you know, the road was probably built higher, but that water was, had to have gone somewhere, and they weren't just gonna let it sit in people's yards, so, let's do some more due diligence to see where everything is at, and then there's been different conversations that have started between, now, did you have any discussion with the, the people, the mysterious, um, developers? And I, and I don't wanna put you on the spot, but-
I was approached by one developer.
Okay.
And he, he wanted to get a split, to get it-
Okay.
And get a split, and he wanted to deal with, uh, Forest Brook if he could.
Okay.
And, uh, you know, and I do know what Forest Brook's specs are as far as building a home and everything, or, I was a part of the association for a while.
Okay.
So, uh, but, uh, you know, that all fell through, and he, oh, it's an outlot, you can't build on it, so, then the ball fell back into my lap, I took it off the market, and here we are today.
Yep. Well, again, Don, there's a lot of moving parts here, so let's try to clarify what we gotta try to figure out. James, you got it written down?
A lot of notes, yeah.
A lot of notes? Um, allow us to find some more information, and then we'll notify everybody again when we have our next meeting, and again, if there's any information that folks have that can be shared, that will shed some light onto where we got to today, um, unless there's something else, somebody else on the board have another?
Now, I did talk to the county Drain Commission as I was going through all this, and they couldn't verify that there was a drain to that property.
But there had to be a, there had to be a drain at Forest Brook.
Listening to this woman here, obviously, they do have something on record about it.
They come out every five or six years, and I hope they get money for something about it.
You know, I'm wondering where is the one?
It's a private drain, it's not a public drain.
Right.
It's not a, it's not a public drain, it's a private drain. If we were legally established, I'm assuming the Drain Commissioner has told you that there has never been a drainage district, uh, with, that's been designated, and a name for that drain, right? There's usually a drain name or a number, so it's a private drain. All the Drain Commissioner does is, when he approves a plat, is he approves the drainage to make sure it complies with his rules, and there's a dedicated drainage easement on this plat. I'm just telling you, it has nothing to do with the Drain Commissioner's jurisdiction or authority.
He makes the decision which way to go.
He, he, he will approve, he looks it over to make sure it applies, it complies with the rules of the Drain Commissioner, meaning-
But it's done by the engineer of the sub.
But it's done by the engineer of the sub, yeah.
And they're not gonna pay for it, that's the key.
Right.
The Drain Commissioner's not gonna pay for it.
I know, I hear that, cause he, like I said, he comes out, but he tells me, you know, the water's supposed to drain away from the lake, these culverts shouldn't have been filled in, which, they're not my property, I didn't really, he tells me I can't fill it in myself, and then if I wanna do it myself, it's a extremely expensive thing with culverts and excavation and all that, so, you know, I'm hoping someday that somebody will pay for it.
Well, let me assure you, if, if someday, if you're going to, it's going to be you and every, and your neighbors. Eventually, it'll get worse, uh, it'll get bad enough, and one, somebody's gonna say we're gonna have to petition for a project, and that's what's gonna happen, or you're just gonna have to live with the, the drainage.
Well, you know, there's living with it, but if you put somebody behind me, and the, you know, you don't need a surveyor, you can see that it runs downhill to right in Maxfield Road.
Yeah.
So if you put somebody behind me, you're going to put your water there, so.
Okay, let's, let's, uh, figure out the information that we have tonight.
I, here's my question, and I would like, answer on is, I would like to know what the drain pattern was supposed to be for this, this particular plat and sub, and whether or not there was, uh, it was intended that the water not flowed to, uh-
North or south.
Next to Lake Road.
Basically, north or south.
Well, Maxfield Road or the Coke.
It was supposed to, and, and I would like confirmation whether it's supposed to go to that outlot.
And you would like me to do that?
No, 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 we'll do it, we'll do it.
No, these are-
We're, we're talking, we're talking about that.
I'm talking to my, our township manager.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, did I look, it's like this eye wanders.
Joe, can I ask you, is that something, with your experience, is that something that could be mediated? Can the property owner do something to address those issues, like you maybe mentioned a pond, a retention pond, or something like that? I mean, are there options?
Well, I will always advocate that property owners get together to figure out how to solve a problem, um, but, I've also found that without some sort of intervention by-
Well, I'm saying, Mr. Cartwright, if he can, if there's the issue, if that's what was supposed to happen, is there a way to mediate that?
Sure, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I'm not so sure I agree with, I, I wanna review Homer's opinion, but, I, I don't see how our authority on this, I, I don't see how an outlot, which is deeply what is described, what an outlot is in the land division, and for plat and purposes, how you, we should, this should have been designated as a buildable lot in any shape or form.
I think because this happened before that law was passed.
Oh, it could be.
That's what he said.
In nineteen sixty-seven.
Yeah, it wasn't defined. Well, it, uh, the problem is, we can't, we, I contacted the Michigan Historical Library, uh, we haven't been able to get a copy of the subdivision act that was in effect when this one was recorded. Uh, what we were able to get were, uh, was something that came from the state, um, one of the State Departments, I wanna say Treasury, on their, their guidelines for drawing up plats, and in that guidance, which was contemporaneous to the, when the plat was done, uh, there is some language that would, again, suggest, you know, if, uh, one, one in particular is that if you intend a lot to be developable, the lot has to be labeled with a number, and then numbers have to be consecutive. Um, that's not statute, that's not law, that's regulatory language from the State Department of Treasury, um, that would, again, suggest that this is Outlet A, and not a numerical consecutive number, uh, according to their rules and guidelines on how plat and subdivisions are to be drawn up. Uh, that's the best we have, we don't have a copy of the subdivision act that was in effect at the time. And it didn't, and what versions that were before that did not shed light on whether there's a clear delineation that the definition of an outlot is not developable. History and practical experience tells us that that was what, how it was supposed to be, but again, the lack of specific detail dedicating that outlot for some purpose other than development, uh, is what's leaving us wanting.
Any other questions tonight? James has some marching orders, and soon as we find out, we'll let everybody know what the next step is. Thank you. Okay, let's go down to item number nine, which is, uh, or eight, uh, we have no pending or new business tonight. Board reports. We are in our second meeting in January, Treasury warning?
Nothing, Ms. Davis.
Trustee Kalaney?
Only that, we will be getting, um, a site plan on the, uh, the Magic Theater, that site plan that came through, um, last week before the Plating Commission, I think it should be on our next agenda, and, uh, I think the, um, we'll have more detail then when we, for the board to discuss, but, uh, it was, it was a well-attended meeting, a lot of well-meaning people that spoke, and, uh, the board will have the opportunity to take a look at that again, so.
Thank you. Trustee Jermaine?
No report.
Trustee Harper?
No report.
Trustee Petrusi?
No report.
Clerk Shofu?
No report.
I have no report this evening, and we'll take a brief recess, and we'll do the manager's report, and our information in the discussion.